Good evening, President Silva, members of the board. I'd like to talk about our fiscal year 2015-16 rate of fee schedule. Starting back in February, staff brought back the preliminary budget with option one on the rates that included an AB 939 increase, the transportation increase, equalization of green waste at $29.50 for all agencies. Revenue, that produced revenues is $16.6 million and expenditures of $15.5 million with CIPs that was going to produce a budget surplus of $210,000. Since then, very, through many studies and trying to find a compromise, there have been several versions of the overall budget that have been talked about. At the MABC meeting, the executive committee recommended bringing forward option three, which is the AB 939, included the AB 939 proposed in the initial preliminary budget. The transportation increase proposed in the preliminary budget reduces the green waste fees $29.50 for all member agencies. Salinas would keep their contracted rate that Republic, that Republic has, which is estimated right now, 1721. So there is a slight reduction in revenues only because of the green waste increase at $16.4 million. The standard expenditure budget of $15.5 million that basically reduces our budget of reserves to $53,000 for the fiscal year. So what that means to the rates, once again, we'll talk about option three. These are estimated as the haulers are currently trying to calculate what their increases will be. Monroe County has a green waste contract that does end on June 30th. Once again, these are the same rates that were brought forward earlier in the year. The, and I cannot see that far, so I apologize, I have to look down. So the city Salinas is looking at about a 40 cent for the typical customer increase, and that's for both the AB 939 and the transportation surcharge. Gonzalez, Solidad, and Greenfield are looking for, add about a 10 cent increase, so that takes into account the green waste reduction. One direction from the earlier statements that we made, King City's green waste contract is actually tied to the Hollow Road operating contract. Staff just discovered this earlier in the week, so they will not see the green waste increase until, not this coming year, probably the year after that contract ends, on September 30th of next year. It's only a small amount of green waste, not enough to greatly affect the budget numbers. So the proposed changes are AB 939 fees. The proposed AB 939 fee is $2,166,100 in total annually distributed through the member agencies based on the landfill tonnage of for fiscal year 13, 14. The annual amounts and monthly amounts are on the screen. The only other changes that we're bringing forth is since we've taken over the operations at Johnson Canyon, there are some special handling charges. We have found that there are customers who need assistance unloading or having loads pulled off. We'd like to charge $75 an hour for staff time to help unload, and $50 for each time we need to pull off or pull assistance. The green waste fees, the minimum fees will stay the same, and the posted green waste rate would be $29.50. And the other changes are the green waste contaminations, and that will let Susan speak to those.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening. The authority receives more than 27,000 tons annually of green waste, predominantly yard trimmings, which accounts for about 69% of all the diversion from our landfill. Before this material can be processed by Vision Recycling at the Johnson Canyon landfill into compost or wood chips, the contamination must be removed to create these products that would be marketable to the public. By contract, the contamination cannot exceed 4%, although the state law allows for us to reject a load which has contamination exceeding 1%. Republic Services is the franchise hauler for the city of Salinas. They deliver yard waste collected from their customers to the Madison Lane Transfer Station, to the Sun Street Transfer Station, and they also direct haul to Johnson Canyon. All the loads from the Madison Lane Transfer Station are clean because waste management removes the contaminants before they take it to the landfill. Also, the loads that are delivered to Sun Street are also cleaned by Vision Recycling before they reach the landfill. So that leaves only the loads that are direct hauled by Republic Services and the other franchise haulers. Unfortunately, the city of Salinas and Republic Services bears the brunt of the contamination responsibility. Through April 30th, 70 of the loads that had been received directly at Johnson Canyon had to be cleaned with an average level of contamination that was twice what is allowed by contract and seven times more than the state regulations allow. The contract also states that contaminated loads can be charged as solid waste, but because we do not want to bury green waste and the per-ton charge for solid waste is $67 as opposed to the $17 that's paid for green waste, this is a pretty harsh penalty. So the authority and Vision Recycling planned an anti-contamination campaign. With the haulers' involvement, we had the rare opportunity to identify the specific neighborhoods where the problem of contamination originated and to target that with yard signs, postcards, labels, and hangers, such as those that I left for you to review, which implied the very simple yes/no message. The last component of the campaign was the creation of a sanitation charge from Vision Recycling to clean the loads. Trucks with at least two cubic yards of contamination would not be charged, but levels beyond the two cubic yards would be charged per load. These fees were considered by the board at the October meeting, and at that time, the board direction was to defer to allow time for Republic Services and the city of Salinas to work out an approach to the problem. The cost of the outreach shared by the authority and Vision Recycling was $25,000, with the three franchise haulers contributing a combined $6,500. To avoid a violation and for excessive litter and the cost of cleaning our neighbor's property adjacent to Johnson Canyon, a litter barrier was recently erected on the southern border of the green waste processing area to contain the litter arriving with the green waste loads. The authority has paid Vision Recycling $9,600 through the end of April to sanitize the 70 loads that have been received, and we will have to continue to fund this until the cost of the fees are passed through to the hauler who delivers the contaminated loads. The hauler in turn will likely request recovery of these fees from their customers through approvals by the respective city councils and the board of supervisors. Only the hauler can identify the offender, and Republic Services has documented how they can accomplish identifying and billing the individual customer through their current operations. On the schedule of rates, which was approved by the Salinas City Council, Republic may pass on these additional fees charged by landfill or transfer station to the customer when it is possible to identify the customer in violation. As we've previously heard from Mr. Kenyon when this topic has been discussed, the most likely source of the problem is residents who have undersized trash service, who use both their recycling and their green waste carts for additional trash disposal. Salinas City Code 14.3 provides, excuse me, for Republic to modify the customer's service levels to accommodate overloading or habitual contamination. Lastly, within the franchise agreement, Republic Services is responsible for controlling contamination levels of the recyclable materials and the green waste through public education efforts and the tagging of improper setouts. The authority and Vision Recycling will continue to provide the carrot by participating in anti-contamination public outreach, but we need to back it up with a stick by passing these costs along to Republic, so they can pass it on to the individual violators who continue to contaminate the carts. The cities of Gonzalez, Greenfield, and Solidad already assess a contamination fee. Staff recommends that the board adopt the fee resolution as presented this evening and after convening a public hearing and discussion to adopt the resolution. If there are any questions, we will do our best to answer them for you.
I have a question. If these contaminated loads are coming from one area, why aren't they being rejected at the site instead of being picked up?
I would like Mr. Kenyon to answer that question, because we are the recipient of the load. He is the recipient of many carts from the individual customers.
What I'm looking at now is contaminated loads, and it's costing authority $130 to clean it, instead of sending it to landowners $68.
$67.
$67. So basically, the whole authority is picking up the tab for the one area in there.
True.
But my question is, why is it being picked up? It should be left at the side of the hill, making it quiet, but the hauler has to answer that.
Any other questions? Have I anything on the fee schedule?
No, no questions for you, Susan, but I do have questions of Doug, so we can have that, follow up on your questions about contamination.
You'll recall when we discussed this before, that said, yeah, this is a Salinas problem. I own it. I believe Salinas, we believe we own it. Part of the problem is it gets buried, which are down at the bottom of the cart. If my drivers had to get out at every stop, I'd never get Salinas picked up in a day. And what happens is they'll bury the extra trash on the bottom of the cart, put a little green waste on top. When we dump it, we can see it in the camera going into the load, but I can't have my guy getting out and climbing into the packer body and taking that stuff out and then putting it into the customer's container. The only thing we can do is log it, put it into our system, get it to customer service, which I outlined in my report that I did following the October 2014 meeting. I put out a report on November 6th illustrating some of the things that we were going to do in moments of direct callback to the individual customer when our driver noticed it. And then we keep, and I've given a tracking mechanism to Andrew Tuckman at Vision Recycling, those customers that we know on a routine basis engage in this practice. But not so much, you know, is the issue of making sure that there's adequate compensation for taking care of the problems as much as we really want to change the customer's behavior. Because I had a discussion with Andrew just a few days ago, and he indicated that even in spite of our additional enhanced documentation processes, the new pictorial yard waste sticker that we're putting on every cart that goes out there, and our notification protocol, the contamination of yard waste has gotten worse rather than better. Now, why is that? If we're doing all of these positive things and we're getting negative results, what does that say? Well, to me, we haven't really done enough to change the behavior. So my recommendation after we had the meeting in October in which the board approved was that the waste contamination discussion would be deferred to a later date to allow Republic and the city of Salinas on an approach that includes public education and geared at, all right, if we're going to whack them, let's let them know what it is, give them a chance to understand the dynamics, because I don't have any problem with that. It's my city council members and people at the city that get the call from their constituents that are going to have the issue. So I would rather have a little bit more advanced administrative due process, if you will, letting them know what's coming, so it isn't a big surprise. Now, I outlined all those things in November. The authority hasn't moved to try to convince the city for us to sit down. I think there's a lot of stakeholders involved that should be looking at this to really grasp the issue and look at changing the behavior, not so much getting the money for cleaning it up, because that's the bottom line. That's what we want to do. I mean, I can easily send the bill out. As Susan said, we've got parameters in there now. Some of the language is a little ambiguous because I might have to wait till they're a habitual person, and that means I got to wait till the third time they've contaminated to be able to yank their cart or give them a fine. But on the first and second one, I still got to pay for the contamination. So there are some issues in the code, and I think I recall last time mentioning that a number of the discussions regarding landlord tenure responsibilities and modifications to the Salinas musical code chapter 14 would benefit recycling expansion but would also aid in the reduction of green waste contamination by ensuring adequate provisions for trash services as incidental to property ownership, not tenancy, would ensure that we'd be able to have better trash level, adequate levels of trash service taking place at these rental properties and businesses, as well as getting better recycling. Now, those things have to be discussed with my customer and with the city and with the city council people here. It's a little bit more dynamic than just going out and sending out a bill. And I would like to think that we had taken enough time to really explore all of the dynamics of the issue, got all of the information out to the constituents, our customers, and the city before I implemented that. Yeah, it's real easy just to send out a ticket, but, you know, it's just like going to court, getting the judgment's the easy thing, collecting on it's the hard part. So it's the same thing in our business, sending out the bills, the easy thing, actually collecting is going to be the hard part. But more of what we want to do is really change the behavior, making sure that people are doing the responsible thing, that the proper things are getting into the proper cart. And it might take a little bit of time. Now, yeah, it's kind of open-ended. We should, maybe should have established a date certain, which could happen here tonight, that we could set a date when we can make sure that the city does respond, that I sit down, city representatives sit down, the waste authority, Andrew Tuckman definitely wants to be a part. He's the major stakeholder in this, so he wants to be a part of that. So we can put together a full, comprehensive battle plan, if you wish, and tackle it by a certain date and see what progress can be made. And then, and then after making sure that we've completely informed the public of the consequences of their behavior, we can then start using the stick. I would rather do, make sure that we did everything we reasonably could have done prior to that, because it will place a burden on me and everybody else who's a stakeholder, as well as the city of Salinas and its representatives and the city council members. So that's all I have. I did an outline for Patrick I will submit. The other thing is I have a hard time understanding why a transfer trailer that has two to three times more the volume and contamination, gets charged the same amount as my collecting truck. It's only got a third. Still trying to figure that one out. Do you have any other questions? I'm here, take a shot.
Matt, Matt, the chair, says we're on this discussion and Mr. Kenyon is asking a question he doesn't understand, and it sounds like maybe Mr. Matthews can have the answer. Can we have that?
I don't have a magic answer, but I have some answers. One, the base rate that we've set where the contamination fee applies is in excess of 10%. So I think that where we set that standard of two cubic yards of material, based on our studies, would represent around 10% contamination. So I think we're being very liberal before we apply that. That still means that Vision Recycling and all the affiliates are going to have to bear the cost for cleaning everything up to that. So we've been cognizant of that fact in terms of where we set the base charge for cleaning up dirty load has to be around 10% contamination. That's a lot of contamination. And again, as Susan said, the state level, we can reject loads at 1%. The contract says four. We've established we, the kid, when it gets to 10%, so there's still a lot of leeway there. And so I believe that, you know, in terms of looking at how we set the rate, we've been very fair and tried to be very liberal. I agree with Doug, there needs to be penalties. I'm not sure why we don't have penalties now. There are simple solutions to this that other communities use, the simplest one being when a customer is a habitual contaminator, meaning they're putting garbage in their recycling or garbage in their green waste, very often the communities will give the customer notice, one spice, third notice, they increase the size of their garbage container, because it's clear they don't have enough room in their garbage container. They're now using their recycling and green waste containers. That's the simplest solution. It's very simple and easy. I know Doug's concern with this will always be that when you do that and start raising bills up because the customer is a habituator, what's going to happen is, yeah, you may give a few more people who aren't going to pay the bill. There's always that issue. But that is a risk. With all due respect to Doug and all the garbage haulers, that is a risk a garbage company takes when they bid in a community, and you have to understand the demographics, understand that if you have these problems and you have to use a stick at some point, yes, that may increase your bad debt, but at the end of the day, that's the simplest solution. You're throwing garbage in your recycling containers, which you don't have enough garbage for, and the garbage company should just up into the next level of service. It's not a penalty, it's just basically changing your level of service to be adequate for what your needs are, based on the fact that you're using these other containers in a program.
So I didn't quite hear the answer for why the curson truck is the same cost as the transfer truck.
I think the issue is it takes more manpower to move eight yards than it does three yards. That's my only question. I saw that, it's like, hey, I'm getting charged the same for somebody that has to move eight yards out of a transfer truck and only moving three yards out of my truck. If I wanted to change that, mine should be less than.
Black to the transfer truck, I think, if you're, Susan, Ray, do you have any comments on that?
I do.
To me, it's the amount of yardage you got, labor.
These were actually established by Vision Recycling as the folks that are providing the service and with both their labor and equipment on the site. So the fees were developed in advance and connected to a modest level of contamination working itself up to the extreme level. So without having benefited of actually putting the fees into practice yet. So what we discovered was there were no transfer loads that required purging of contamination because the transfer trucks come either from Sun Street where Vision Recycling does the cleaning, or from Madison Lane Transfer Station where Waste Management does the training. I totally agree that it does seem disproportionate, but fortunately, we have not yet had to assess, we would not have assessed anyone the cost for purging a transfer load if the fees had actually been in effect. But I don't have a good answer, other than that's what Vision Recycling established.
So I wanted to make a suggestion after the comments.
And Doug, Richard? My comment right now is, as long as Salinas doesn't adopt any rules or penalties, then the violator right now is escaping free on everybody else's dime. The whole district is paying for that contamination. Where Salinas gets in here and puts their fees in place, that might solve the problem, like I said. So until they do that, then everybody's paying for it, and then your violator is to escape.
That's right.
And right now, it's costing us more to clean it than dump two loads in landfill, like City's stuff going to landfill, but it's cheaper on the district to put that on the ground. You put two loads on the ground compared with what it takes to clean one load. And I can't see the extra cost in cleaning when we have landfill. Granted, it's 70 loads, but it's, it'd be a lot cheaper to everybody concerned to bury it. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Kenyon, with his tracking mechanism that you were talking about, is, you know, because since you brought this to our attention a while back, I made a point just to walk the block on, just to look at the garbage cans, and I totally agree, actually, where your yard waste should go, it's packed with garbage, you know, and it's constant. I think one of the things that I would be interested in is how are you doing it now? I'm sure you're doing something, you've identified certain habitual violators, but you know what, and to the, and that's a question regarding the tracking mechanism, but to what the staff has done, public education, because I know we keep beating that drum, public education is out there, you see it. I mean, it is, it's in the schools, it's in different events, I've seen it, Spanish, English, whatever language you want to. I think what happens as well in the neighborhood where I reside, is you have a turnover of tenants, because people come to work and for some reason they're off a few days from work, they can't pay the rent for a room or something, they move on somewhere else, and it's continuous. So the only mess that interest they have is their jobs here, and a lot of times, you know, if there's garbage, it just goes in there, and that's continuing. So, yeah, I would like to look at some solutions here, because these folks are right, if it's a Salinas issue, we need to seriously address it, and of course, but now you said that giving the ticket is one thing, collecting from that is another thing, so I don't know.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone else in the public who has a comment to this?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I heard Salinas say that he doesn't, his drivers don't have time to look in the garbage cans, I think. You know, look at containers, they're see-through, can't they make a garbage container that's see-through, that way you discharge the garbage, they can see the stack used in that container? That way they don't have to pick it up?
Yeah.
I mean, I know they make see-through containers, but I would think that's an option, they should do.
Any other members on the board?
So I, my thoughts are that the, looking at the rest of the budget, I think the rest of the budget is good, it's woven together. My suggestion is that we, at this point, approve the budget, but without the green waste contamination fees on page 63, and that what we do is that we have time to implement that public education program, because absolutely Doug is correct. This is all about educating people. Slapping fines on people is fine if they understand we can deliberately break people off, but the problem that we have with Salinas is that we're looking at landlords that are paying that are paying for a 32-foot gallon cart. And the renters don't have options in this. That's the cart that they're given. And they can't get their garbage in it, they don't have other alternatives, unless they want to dump those dirty diapers out onto the street. So it's, it's a frustrating situation, it's a social situation. And it's a community problem that has to be addressed as a community. So what, what my suggestion is, is we hold off on those green waste contamination fees, go ahead and approve the budget without them. And that we ask the authority, I guess Patrick particularly, to set up a meeting with all the stakeholders, that would be Andrew Tuckman, the city, somebody from the city, Doug, the authority, that we work together, we establish a date where we can get this public education program put together, so that we have this administrative process, as you called it, Doug, put together, that we can go start the community meetings. And that we tell the landlords, that we've worked with the landlords, that they have got to increase the size of their containers. Because it's, what's going to happen is the fees are going to be, go up, they're not going to get paid. It's going to become a never-ending problem when it's really not totally the fault of the renters. It's really the fault of the landlords. And we've got to reach out to those landlords. Many of them don't even live in Salinas, so that would be my suggestion. And I would actually make that a form of motion.
That's taken.
Okay, before I take that, I have something, but Rob, that was a pretty good idea. I was able to see the container, right? But I was also thinking, as Jill was speaking, that if you have identified the habitual contaminators, knowing that a lot of the people probably, they are not sticking to the number of people that should adequately live in an apartment or home, understanding the demographics, is it possible to offer a C2 garbage container or waste container, maybe not at the same fee, but a slightly reduced fee, to encourage them to only use the right receptacle? I mean, that could be a way to look at it, possibly alleviating that issue, rather than, you know, crossing our fingers and hope that they don't put the wrong things in the wrong can.
Those are all part of the solutions and, you know, possibilities that I think a stakeholder group should look at. And I don't want to say I'm going to do something or not do something, unless my customer is on board with it and the city's on board with it. I'm not in a habit of just going out and doing things without them knowing what it's about, how it's going to take place and what the consequences are going to. And then have to make sure everybody, all the stakeholders buy in, because they all got a statement. No comments?
I appreciate your comments, Jill. And each one of us represents our own cities or our own jurisdictions. And if I were in your shoes, I probably would have made the same, similar comment. To Richard's point, though, I could not support the motion that's on the floor right now, because it does, in a way, unfairly punish my residents and the other South County and the other unincorporated moderate counties. So I just wanted to say, I, I will not, cannot support the motion as stated for those reasons.
So the motion is, that was, I have two questions. There may be a comment. So the motion takes care of none of 13 or part of 13. I'm trying to think of what that motion is.
For the motion that I need is to approve the budget without the green waste contamination fees. If you find that case super.
Well, if, if, if I may, we're not approving the budget, we're talking about fees.
I'm sorry.
This is, this is the public right here. We're all in, I, we're all in, I, well, right now. Item 13. So some of it, 13 is, is AB 939, and it's also the transportation surcharge. And the third item is green waste tip fees, correct? Three?
Yes.
So does the motion include, we not do nothing on three?
No, her motion was to approve the rates as proposed, but to defer decision on article.
Correct. Yes, Salinas is 370.
Yeah, to defer decision on the green waste contamination fees, so.
Which is the third item.
That's, yes.
Because it talked, what, what, what the third item is basically what folks were talking about is, it to some extent, not completely, but a lot of it has to do with green waste inequities that change your state's municipal KPA. So am I that correct?
Two different issues. Yeah, that's the, you're talking about the green waste fees themselves. What we're talking about now is the contamination fees when you get a load of green waste.
And that's under item under 13.
Where are those?
Those are also in the fee schedule, I think they're on the third or fourth page. So if you look at your, if you look at your budget, it'd be on page 83 of 114.
How come it's not an under item 13? Because we're not looking at the budget right now.
It is. Within the budget is our piece yet. So the fees are included, we're only improving the fees first. Once the fees are approved, then we improve the budget.
So we have everything else in the motion, except the green fees, except for the green waste contamination.
Okay, well, we end three.
Uh, 83 and 11. And, and so my second question is, it's already been around, what, 18 years since? More or less, 1997? So how long has this been going on? Anybody have a sense of that contamination?
Since 2005, we began the organics program at De Johnson Canyon landfill.
So it's just been going on for 10 years now, we're trying to talk about being going on. I heard it last year, the year before, maybe four years ago. You know, I always have hope, knowing the rest of them, you know? And I'm not trying to be just pessimistic or disrespectful. I, you know, I don't think we're going to take care of this, talking about this for six months, for a year, for two years. I don't care how many stakeholders you got involved, I don't care how smart you are, the bottom line is, 10 years is a long time. And one thing that we all know is, um, this is not an excuse either, okay? It's the reality we know. A great majority of our residents in cities, in counties, unincorporated areas. But let's, you know, let's talk about Salinas, let's talk about Zico 9395. Is a great, we all know, we've got people that are friends, that are relatives, that are neighbors. A great many folks live in garages. Two families in garages. Family, we've got families where to survive, there's two or three, four families living in a three-bedroom house. So I see how this thing gets perpetuated. That's why I say, let's all stakeholders get together. It just, we all know, this thing is so deeply complicated. I don't see how we're going to be able to get to it. We don't have, if we had five times the agency that we do now in terms of staff, between the JPA, between the cities, between the county, this is a major organizing effort that we don't have resources, staff for. That's why I say, we're not going to be on that forever and we're still not going to have an answer, supposedly. That's all.
Now, I agree, I think we could raise a good question here in terms of fairness for the system, if, if the issue is focused in Salinas. And I agree with Fernando, that, you know, at some point, the only way to change behavior is through the pocket money. That's why we're charging people that get a recyclable bag 10 cents, because they're going to pay something if they don't bring in the recyclable bag. And that's the reality, that's why it was embedded that there is a consequence for not bringing your recyclable bag. So in this case, I mean, I think Patrick raised the solution. And we know, because Fernando's right, there's two or three families in some of those homes. If you want to change, you can tell them, we're going to give you a warning, we're going to give you a bigger garbage can, so that you can put the additional. I mean, it takes process of education with the landlords too. They're multifamily, you've got to go talk to those landlords. You're building in, part of the rent should be part of this issue, how to deal with the, with the garbage. So I think, I think that you just have to force it, you have to come up with it, so. I mean, I wish I could, I could wait longer, but at this point, I think the city just got to own up this issue and solve it, figure out a way, because otherwise. And I looked at my adjustments for my unincorporated area here. They're going high. And again, I'm willing to support that, but I want it to be a fair system. So I'm, my, my focus, or my point to Salinas is let's own it, let's base it, let's come up with some solutions. I certainly can't, you know, support something that's not fair to my folks that are doing what they're doing. And if they're not following the rules, then give them a penalty, charge them more. And if they come to me, I'll tell them, you're not following the rules. And if you need a bigger can, get a bigger garbage can, because you're contaminating the waste, the recyclables and the yard waste. I mean, it's, it's, it's the only way to deal with it. I also, I know what we can do, but you can have all the education. But it's, it's the fact that there's a lot of people living in some homes. And they better be able to pay for the bigger garbage cans to, to put their, their recyclables and their garbage in the yard.
Yeah, and some of those landlords, unfortunately, are slum landlords. And a lot of our families that are migrant and farmworking families in the 1995 area, some of them, it's not their fault, it's some landlords, okay? So I think what we're looking for is some time, if, if we can get it, so that we can, and I don't lose, sometimes I lose hope, but in this one, I have hope, that we can go out there again and do that education. And, you know, how many months would we need? That's a question. Maybe Councilmember Lutz can, can address that.
Well, let me, let me offer what I hope, I hope will be considered a compromise. I, I think, I'll speak for staff on this, and I think we're frustrated because it hasn't been solved yet and it's not a new problem. So I echo those comments, but I also understand it's a complex issue for Salinas. It's really complex for everybody. I think what would make us feel comfortable at least is if we do have a date certain. I mean, I, I'm not a voting member, but, you know, I would say, you know, a compromise might be simply something like, these rates will go into effect January 1st. And that, that's a date certain. We'll bring it back to January 1st in the board direction. And that gives Salinas seven months now to work through this issue. We can have stakeholders, whatever we need to do. But if we have a date certain and we know the bleeding will stop, we can work on covering our costs going forward. But I just don't want to see this continue to be perpetuated without some kind of certain date. So I think, I would just recommend that as a possible compromise solution, so we can move the, the rates to get to the board.
I have two questions. One, the contaminant loads were put in the landfill. Who brings the burden on the cost?
The hauler.
The hauler? And if it's clean, we do.
Well, the hauler pays for all of it, they just pay a much lower rate if it's green waste and it's clean. And if it's verdis garbage, I think from staff's perspective, we don't want to get green waste in the landfill.
I wouldn't want green waste in the landfill neither.
Yeah.
But that was one question. The second is, we have the post changes right now for contamination. And I think if we do adopt it, I think this does put Salinas in a good, to get your education in, educate the landlords. Because without, if we leave it out for, for further discussion, like Fernando said, it would be your two-year before you come back to the resolution on it. But I would, I would say leave the green waste contamination in the budget, but we can give them a six months' order to effect in January 1st, it goes into effect. And this is Salinas six months to get their act together on it.
Yeah, I believe we, in council, I believe we could modify the rate schedule to say these rates will be effective in the service. So we're approving them tonight, they become effective, they'll have to come back to the board for approval.
Is the maker willing to modify the motion?
Yes, sir.
Well, when you say these rates, all the original.
I'm sorry, the contamination.
Except for the green waste contamination to be affected, it'll affect January.
January, correct.
Thank you. But there needs to be an amended motion, second.
So I'm going to amend my motion, so that just the green waste contamination fees.
I just want to get some clarification, because I think, you know, Richard brought up something that, you know, Patrick and I got the dilemma with. With my individual, I can drive down the street and I know who's going to be contaminating. But if I dump that person's green waste cart in my trash truck, it's going to have a certain amount of green waste in it. So I'm also not, I'm cleaning up the green waste, but I'm also dropping a certain amount of organics in the landfill and the trash. That's another risk. I mean, I can, I can do that now. But that's the other dilemma we're up against, is that if I know I'm going to dump that, I know I'm going to dump a certain amount of green waste into the landfill. Now, is that 1%? Is it 4%? Is it going to be 5%? We don't, I don't know. But, you know, by doing that, I'll definitely get the trash out of the green waste truck.
Brian, the chair? I'm going to support the motion, but you, you know, one of the issues that I do have, and I, and I appreciate the comments that are being made, but you know what? I've, I've learned to think commie like myself when I'm on this board. You know, yeah, Salinas, I'm interested in, because there's a district that elected me over there. But I try to see what's in the best interest of everybody. And when I hear about education, when I hear about farm workers or whatever, you know what? The driver, it, it starts right there, when the, when the garbage can is there, and, and I don't know what you do or you don't do, but once you pick that garbage up, you're taking whatever it is that you just picked up. Now, my question is, because I live in a neighborhood where we have serious problems, and you know what? There are economical problems. And a lot of times, people come for work, but the, there's no housing and it's too expensive to leave there. But the thing is, we should not excuse them. If they're going to start throwing things in there that are going to contaminate, I think they, they may need to be just as responsible as maybe as the one that's educated on the, on the poster. But as long as we're going to tippy toe around the issue, we're never going to resolve this. The best thing I can do maybe as a truck driver, you know, I see the problem, oh, no, leave it there. Maybe they'll get the message, hey, how come we didn't take the, what's he going to do now with the loaded garbage can in front of the yard? So I don't know. A lot of times, we complicate things and they get bigger. And like Supervisor Venta says, it goes on for years. And we're still trying to figure out a solution for it. So there it is.
Any others with, from board members? If not, a fourth public hearing, and Jill has amended her motion to accept the fees with the exception of contamination for the city of Salinas. And table that.
For all of it.
For all of it.
Regardless of order.
All green waste contamination to January 1st, 2016. Okay, so all in favor of the motion, signify that same time. The host passed unanimous, thank you. Item 114, resolution improving the operating budget and fiscal year 2015-16, like personnel allocation and salary schedule. Some staff questions?